Counsel today, we're going to be discussing fire with you as you know. Couple of years ago, we went through a plan and a program of coming up with a fire plan that we utilized a number of community meetings, significant input from our community, our volunteer firemen, elected officials, and general citizens. And we came up with a plan. Counsel considered and counsel approved the plan that we began implementing two years ago when we implemented a fee while we began working on the focus of trying to get the General Assembly to relax Act 388 that would allow us to implement a millage in lieu of the fee. The COVID last year kind of killed that effort, so we continued to carry forward the program of using the $29 fee for this current year that we're in. With the election of Senator Gustafson, she took the Act S401, the Senate bill that was focused on allowing us to do a one-time reset of fees, and she was able to get it all the way through second reading on the Senate floor, but it did not get a third reading. Therefore, it is dead for the year. The House has a bill as well they could consider, but lack of passing it in the Senate, for all intents purposes, has killed it for this year. So, today, we're here to present you the fire plan. Well, again, back to the beginning of what the plan is, where we are currently, and then open the door for counsel to begin discussing where you wish us to go. We'll have options if you wish us to continue implementing the plan for you to consider, as well as whatever else you may present to us. But we've tried to come up with various options for you to consider if you wish to continue us implementing the plan. So with that, I will turn it over to our fire department to start giving you the briefing.
Hey, reintroduce all your team that's here.
Yes, sir. Scott Wildes, Mercy Management and Fire Service still. Steven Teal is Battalion Chief, and Gary Parneil Battalion Chief. And that's the three amigos you get right now. All right. First off, any fire service, we've been dealing with this for a while. We've been knee-deep into it, sometimes up to our neck. So, just to start off current state, where we're at, we've got our 12 main stations, five substations. The current staff is 11 full-time personnel, and that's the 10 that we hired off the first round, and then, of course, the chief's position in there. Currently, we have 14 part-time personnel that we use to backfill with those full-time guys and fill other stations as well. The 160 volunteers that we currently have, that's throughout the whole county minus Lugoff and Camden. And of course, our apparatus that we currently have in service right now. Challenges, nothing's really changed on that. We're still looking at the same challenges, that 7P to 7A call volume, getting those calls answered and stuff. Apparatus replacement plan, we're getting up on 20 years, not more on some of these trucks. Of course, SCBA's, radios is a big discussion, AEDs, and then, of course, our recruitment retention to try to get more volunteers in. The volunteer side of it, we have to dig a lot deeper to try to come up with ideas to get those guys to come in and stay. Onto our, the original plan. Started off in September, we posted the positions for those two battalion chiefs and eight firefighters. That, this is off the original plan, so next slide show where we're at. January 2020, we started, or EMS was able to start their EMS station four behind Blaney Fire Station. It was built and completed in July. And then, July of 2020, we went into the Blaney Station. Once EMS got moved out, and we started doing some renovations to accommodate going to a 24-hour service for those guys, so they, a little bit more usability in that building. '21, '22 was the projected timeframe to start and get the Cassett Station built. '22, we were looking to hire three more, which, to make a three-man crew at Blaney on that 24 hours. '23, once we got the Cassett Station completed, we moved to a 24-hour operation in Cassett. In '24, we would have hired another three for Cassett to make that a three-man crew running as a 24-hour at Blaney and Cassett.
I wish you all had quick calls.
Yes, sir. And I mean, I've got the number off, we've got numbers in there. If you want those numbers, we can give them to you before we leave. So, I mean, we've got them, we just didn't put them in the slide here. So, all right, current status of the five-year plan, this is where we're at with that five-year plan currently. The first 10 were hired, the two battalion chiefs and eight firefighters. EMS, they've gotten their new home, they're out of the Blaney Station, we're running our 12-hour shift in there currently. The land was purchased for Cassett Fire Station, but everything last year, kind of putting hold on stuff, so that kind of stopped a little bit. Going forward beyond getting the land purchased, and I know we did the geo study, we did the PERC test, we did all that stuff. So, that stuff's ready to go, it's just waiting on getting to that point to go ahead and start building that station and get it going. To continue with this five-year plan with COVID, we know that through monkey wrenching everybody's projects and stuff, get us going to 24 hours, another battalion of four firefighters would get us to 24-hour shifts both sides of the river. So, that would give us that 24 hours of fireman, fire truck being able to run 365 days a year. But carry everything, no, but that'd get us going in the right direction. With the Cassett Station, currently, we've got an estimation of 1.4 is what they're giving us some numbers on right now. And that's still, that's just the beginning phase, so we can see lower. Just, I know the values on everything is starting to skyrocket for some reason. Wood, steel, everything wants to go up, so we're fighting that battle as well. For that other battalion chief and four firefighters, estimated $385,000 would be a turnkey package for those five positions to start in. That's their salaries with fringe benefits, uniforms, gear, and radio. So, that's kind of a turnkey to get them in the door and start running in, to add to making it 24 hours. Excuse me, sir?
That's the annual cost?
That would be, is 345 is the annual cost for salary and fringe benefits, and that extra 40,000 there is their uniforms, equipment, and radios and stuff. Yes, sir. So, that would actually come off as being an annual cost, but the 345 would still be there roughly for the salary and fringe benefits. This just kind of goes along, the current staffing, that kind of gives you some numbers. I don't know, Mr. Jones, I don't know if those numbers there are kind of what you were looking for. The two battalion chiefs and the eight firefighters currently is around 690,000 is what their salaries and benefits are. To go up to those extra, that extra five, which would put us three battalion chiefs and 12 firefighters, we're looking at just a little over a million dollars just in salaries and benefits.
That's the total cost?
That would be, that would be the total cost of going 24 hours to two shifts for 24 hours. And then, back to the original plan, that 21 number that we were using is three battalion chiefs and 18 firefighters to have a crew on both sides, that battalion chief run at three-man crews per station, just shy of, or low over 1.4 million is their salary altogether for those guys. Yes, sir?
So, the middle, the middle block would just be a 24-hour shift at Blaney?
No, that'd be 24-hour at Cassett and Blaney.
That was, oh, so that was across both sides of the river? Okay.
Yes, sir. That would, that would get us to our bare minimum of 24 hours to cover on both sides of the river.
Is that also assuming that we're building, we've built a new station, or we haven't got there? Okay.
That would be going with that station. We do have them in a station right now that could, could then be used for 24 hours until that station is built. It would, it would serve the purpose to get them through that point.
At Shepherd, right?
Yes, sir, at Shepherd, right.
Okay.
Yes.
About 350 grand, it looks like.
Yeah, but.
Plus the cost of the building.
Yep.
And the potential of having to build a building. He just, yeah, we can do it without the building, but it looks like they'd like to have a building as well.
No, sir, that would cover the Blaney Station and the east side station, yes, sir.
380,000 plus minus 40 of that.
Yes. Yes, sir. That would get us to a 24-hour crew, 365 days a year on both sides of the river.
Scott, question?
Yes, sir.
I'm probably getting ahead of you, but do the fire reserves have money to build the station now, or is?
The last, the last update I had, just going off that estimate, we're going to be short of building that station. Andrew, I didn't get a chance to get hold of it yesterday, but I think the last one was around 1.2-ish is what we have.
That's what we're going to be short, or that's what we have, we have 1.2?
So, we're going to be short about $200,000, $300,000 off the estimate.
Okay.
But that, I mean, that wipes, that wipes all reserves out.
Right, so you're, you come up short if you need to replace a truck or something?
Yes, I mean, trucks, there's some other information that I've got in the book. I don't have on slides because I know numbers and all that stuff start running together, but there's some other information in there. Just, just out of some numbers, a standard engine, a two-door engine, you're looking at $350,000, $400,000 for, to replace that truck.
Right.
A custom cab truck or four-door truck that we're looking at to accommodate these crews for Blaney and Cassett, because there are going to be a three, four-man crews, you're looking at $600,000 for that truck.
So, do we, if we hired, if we hired the firemen needed and the battalion chief needed, or the two battalion chiefs needed, these 10 people, do we have trucks currently that they can use?
The trucks, because of being, being that there's two on shift right now, those trucks can be used, that are current trucks. As we move forward with growing the crew, you're going to have, we're going to have to look at that crew cab truck, style truck, so that all three, four of them can get to the scene at the same time, and still have trucks, volunteers, and other guys come in and get behind, so.
But, but to make a bare bones move forward in the right direction, we could say, hey, just, if we can find the funding for the, for the eight firemen and the two battalion chiefs, that's, that's a move forward.
Well, you'd be adding four firemen and one battalion chief. Currently.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, currently, each battalion chief has their shift, and they have four firefighters under them currently. So, you basically add, just add another battalion chief and four, that way it'll give you your three days, they'll work 24 on, 48 off.
Okay.
So, every shift will have a battalion chief and four firefighters with that middle plan right now.
Thank you so much. Vic, I know we can't do the millage because it was shot down in the Senate, but 300, because I know the fire millage is different than your standard millage, how much in millage would that have been to 340,000?
In real rough figures, maybe 2.3 mils?
2.3 mils?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I don't have it in front of me to see.
That would be?
That's an increase, yes.
Increase. But in the total, well, total with the, doing away with the fee, because you had the $29 fee.
We had, I'll run those for you. We didn't run them, so I'll run those for you.
Because that's, that was the initial plan, I think, that some of the members of council wanted to do if the bill had passed.
You swap it out. Right. I'll, I'll run those for you.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's unnecessary because we can't do it, and we can't do the millage. Okay. Thank you. I don't think we have the capacity, do we?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
What's, have you heard from the auditor, what's our ability to raise millage, just under?
I believe it was three tenths of a mil.
Three tenths of a mil that we're at, okay.
There's a, there's a cap that.
Yes, sir.
That three... So that three tenths of a mil would equal what?
Your current mill value is right near the top beat. 147?
Yeah, so the 30, 42,000 dollars maybe?
I'm sorry, say again?
Maybe 40, 42,000 dollars.
Not all, okay. All right. Um, alternate suggestions. Do, do we have, do we have excess funds anywhere?
The issue with excess funds anywhere is that the fire district only is allowed to collect revenue from the unincorporated area and the towns of Elgin and Bethune. So we can't collect from Camden, nor can we collect from the ring around Camden, because they already get fire from Camden, nor can we get it from Lugoff. The problem is that those areas pay into other areas. So we can't take money they've paid for one service and use it for a service they're not able to receive. So general fund, for example, everybody pays into the general fund. We can't use that to run the fire department on a regular basis. We can make a loan to them, but they'd have to pay it back to the general fund. Uh, the same thing with sewer. We can't take sewer money and use it to run the fire department because it's two separate pots of money. We can't mingle them.
The, the rooftop fees that, that we're talking about and those sorts of things, could they be used to fund fire?
Not operations, but they could be used to fund capital costs. Yes, sir.
You could buy a truck, you could, you could build a firehouse.
Correct.
But it's not a, a continuous positive cash flow?
That's correct.
So a quick question. Vic, what is your plan, if this is to be brought before County Council, what, how is your plan to pay for this?
Well, Ms. Jones, the, the first thing is, is by getting with council today, it is our, our hope that we will have a sense for the direction council would like us to go in so we can present to you. Um, and we kind of have.
I think council has already, maybe not me so much, but the majority of council has already indicated they wanted you to push forward and bring back a recommendation. So, I mean.
We have, and, and we have several options right now in front of you on recommendations of the fee, what we could do with the fee.
Okay. So you will be bringing back a recommendation on the fee?
Yes, that's correct, unless council directs us otherwise. That's correct.
And that's the intention to do that today, right, Vic?
Yes, sir. Right. So, so we can have a budget proposal to present to council. So we have information that shows you how the fee can be broken down, but there are different ways that you could do the fee. Right now, all the fees are just on houses, improved properties. Uh, we do not do fee on vehicles. We do not do fees on, on parcels.
So are you thinking about generating a new fee? Or, or establishing a new, a new fee to bring before council?
One of, one of the options would be to, to go to a, a hybrid where you have fees on, on not only improved property, but also vehicles and also, um, parcels. Uh, that would lower the, the fee needed on the improved properties because you're making it up for it in other areas where fire service is used. That's one of the options. Another option is just raising the fee as it currently is on the improved parcels. So that's an option as well. And then I believe that we were also working on if we did a square footage of buildings. And so we, rather than a flat fee, it was a fee based on the, the actual volume under roof or the volume of territory. And then therefore the fee would be different for every parcel or house based on how big the property was.
Okay. So you, I mean, it's, it's good to see this, but it's, it's even better to know how we plan to fund it. Yeah.
Well, to Jimmy's point, are we going to get to some detailed options later on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Later on, when is later on? Today?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Okay. Good. That, well, that's what I'm interested in is the bottom dollar.
Yeah, because this slideshow right here is pretty much, I'm at the end of this part. The next step was to get into that section there to kind of give you guys. We've got a live spreadsheet. We do have a printed spreadsheet there for you guys. It's got some numbers on it right now, but we do have a live spreadsheet. So we can see some numbers and how that would actually kind of change some things and this and that. Here, if you could pull that up here. All right. The, the top line there is our current fee that we have is $29.
That's, that's.
Yes, sir.
Part right here, everybody.
And that's basically the same copy as what's on the screen there, but the one on the screen is a live one. So we can actually change numbers and move some stuff around. But the top line there is the current fee, the $29 on improved parcels. And that's roughly what it generates. That's the total what it should be generating right now, but taking into effect, your 95% collection rate is actually around 520. Fender can correct me if I'm wrong. That's roughly around 520, I think is what we're looking at. I know you just sent me a revised, but. Yes.
Yeah, Jimmy's looking for a laser. I don't know.
I loaned it to somebody and it's gone. No, it's my laser. Yeah, because I was going to hand it to you. You got one.
That, that top line there, the, where it says current fees. It does change the stuff on there. One second.
Is that where we're at?
That's our current, yes, sir. The $29 fee on improved parcels. And it's roughly 18,474 on those parcels that are getting the fee. From my understanding, that's a mix of residential, I think commercials involved in that as well. Um, so that's what we're.
So when it says total, that's the total from the fee. Then the mill right beside it to the right, that's how much we receive from the current millage as well.
Our current millage is 10.6 and it's roughly 147,000 per mill.
And your total budget?
That's our total budget, yes, sir.
And under that current mill, you can, you can move it up just a squeak.
Three tenths.
On the mill part, yes.
Which won't do anything.
No, I was just, I'm just trying to understand it, right?
And then that second part there where it says Plan One.
Hey, am I doing that?
It might be doing that from there, yes, sir. It's all right. That's why I've got a Gary over here. He'll fix it real quick.
Tell us what each of the three plans are before we get into the numbers. Okay. Give us the big picture.
Yes, sir.
Plan One is current.
Plan One is to split those, as Mr. Carter said, split those kind of up. Uh, improved partial vacant, partial vehicle and commercial. And stagger those different fees out for them. So they're not all on one. It kind of splits it up amongst those four areas. Plan Two would be to go to all fire parcels or all parcels and then all vehicles. And of course, the Plan Three was the one we had on there, but it had, has failed and that was the millage increase. Um, so that was kind of on the back burner for a year. They're not allowed to touch anything else on that, correct? So those are kind of the two that we've come up with right now. Either split it kind of amongst everybody or just go to all parcels and vehicles. Those are just a couple of options that we've come up with right this time, so.
And these are the starting points for y'all to start getting into and moving and tweaking.
Just, just so I'm clear, there's no way we can move money out of the general fund in any way, shape or form to help fund this?
Not on an annual basis, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, like I said, if they, if they ran a deficit, we could transfer money over there, but that would be a loan. They'd have to pay it back.
And then there would be nowhere for that money to come from, to pay it back.
If they had no, correct.
So this.
Is there a way to change that law?
Those are basic accounting principles for governmental accounting. I don't believe that, that that's something the General Assembly even gets involved with that part of it. This is governmental accounting, Gatsby.
Because we can't.
Well, somebody had to write the law at some point in time.
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, but it's a matter of like principle. Like you can't, you can't charge a Camden resident double.
No, I get that.
And, and. And use their money. You can't use their money to fund, fund a service. It's against the law to, to charge a citizen anything that they can't utilize. So.
I get that, but I mean, like in the, within the general fund, we give money to, to nonprofits and we, we fund things within the community.
But every citizen has access to be able to use those nonprofits, whereas.
Right. That, it gets on a more legal principle of a citizen could file a suit against us.
But every citizen doesn't get the opportunity to voice whether or not they want to fund that nonprofit.
They do, they elected you and, and me.
Well, we could do a referendum and ask the people what they think.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, when, when we're giving money away out of the general fund and we have a, a clear need, it frustrates me that we can't tighten the belt to fund a clear need. And we're still funding other things within the county that not everybody's going to take advantage of. And yeah, you're right. That is why they elected me.
But, but, but I have to agree with Russell on, on his point there, but let me just, let me say this too. It's amazing in, in what you said theoretically, I understand, uh, David, councilman, but, you know, we have a sewer fee that a lot of members of the county cannot ever have sewer, but yet they pay a sewer fee. And I have a lot of heartburn with that as well.
Well, and really that, that, it should not be called sewer fee. It should be called an economic development thing because that's, that's how that got in. Because everyone can take advantage of, and I'm not, I'm, I'm actually agreeing with you.
It got in because of sewer, not economic development.
But, but we know how, we know how it was able to.
They tried to change the economic development so they could try to dangle a carrot.
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. There are people who pay a sewer fee that don't get to utilize a sewer and that's, you know, that was before, that was before me.
It is, but, but.
But I'm just saying, I'm just, just.
But you just sat there and told me that it was an economic, meant for an economic development fee and you weren't there. I was there. It was meant for a sewer fee, a tax.
Right. But legally, that's how, that's how they got through this. That's how they got through what we're talking about. Because everyone, yes, no one, not everyone can take advantage of the sewer, but they all can benefit from economic development in the county. And at least that's how it was explained to me. Because I've, I've had the same questions that you have.
Sure. Well, hopefully you would have voted against it if you had been here because it was, it was wrong and I still think it's wrong. It is taxing people for something they'll never see. Up on West Water E, a lot of folks in your area will never see it, but they're going to pay the taxes on it. And you can call it whatever you want, but it's a sewer tax. That's exactly what it is. Anyway, I didn't mean to get into all that, but, but Russell, that was a very good point you made there.
Thank you. Well, I, but, but I think we're, we're debating trivial trivialities at this point because we can't, we can't change Gatsby. We can't change any of this. I mean, it's frustrating. I, I get it. I'm with you. I mean, why, you know, I'd love to be able to.
That's the whole reason I ran was to create change. So I, I will not take the attitude that I cannot create change.
And here's the thing too, uh, guys, we're, we're sitting here today and we're running around rooftop fees, partial fees. Uh, I mean, we're talking about trying to generate money through implementing possibly new fees. So we need to have some clarification on, and I guess I'm sure we will have it once we're finished on where we're going to try to go with this. What kind of fees are you looking at producing to pay for additional fire service if that is this council's wish?
And it's always the first place we go is to the taxpayers.
It's always the first place politicians go is to the taxpayers. Except me.
Go ahead with the presentation. I'm sorry, we got derailed.
I said that, those are what we, I mean, it's, our hands are kind of tied on the fireside. It's, it's the only option we really got to fee without that millage thing that they were just trying to do over the house and stuff. The fee, there's different ones, splitting it up amongst the improved, vacant, per vehicle and commercial. Um, we can kind of show you some different numbers there. Those aren't hard numbers or anything. We just, now the partial counts and stuff, those are numbers that we've gotten from the assessor's office. So those numbers are pretty spot on. The other part, the actual fee, we can play around with those just to show you what it would generate, um, where it would put us. So if you see a number on there, like for instance, right now, we've got on there for improved parcels, $40. Uh, vacant parcels, $30, per vehicle 20 and commercial 100. So we can change these numbers around on this, this live spreadsheet to be able to show you what it will generate and kind of, we know currently the $29 is what our fee is right now.
But Scott, tell me, your, our current budget is 2 million and some change.
Yes, sir.
So tell me, and I, I mean, I know you, you presented it to us in the previous slides, but just give me the rock, like what do you, what do you need to get 24-hour shifts in the county beginning this summer? What's, what, what's the?
To get to the 24 hours is hiring that other crew.
Hiring that other crew, which was that, that was 384, 85,000, which is a recurring cost of 340?
Around 3, 345, 350ish.
Okay. Because I'm just, you know, just for our, you know, I want to get to like, what do, what do we need? And then we can start from there as far as playing.
That would get us, that would get us to the 24-hour period and get us kind of back on track minus the Cassett Station, which we're trying to get, figure that one out as well. Um.
How much more in fees would that be? I mean, that's the most important question, I would think.
That's $20 roughly.
So you took, so the $29 would have to have.
If you just raised it where it is currently.
So the $29 for our fee would have to go $20 higher, $49, and then that would do phase two to.
Or you could split them up to where you do a common, you could, you know, I've been playing with the numbers. You can, you can lower the current fee, but then also add on a, a vehicle fee. There's a lot more vehicles riding around than there are. So, you know, you kind of, you can kind of spread it out. Have, have we thought about, so I, I know a lot of these numbers, um, you're accounting for making a payment or trying to build the Cassett Station, but have we gotten any kind of numbers on maybe a Plan B of, you know, if Shepherd has barracks and you're able to house a crew, is it feasible at this time to just rehab Shepherd in a good enough way, a way that we, that'll get us by for a couple more years? Or are we just really dead set on, we got to have a Cassett Station?
Well, with the Cassett Station, when we ran all these numbers originally, uh, we went off the call volumes and the heat maps and stuff. That's why Cassett got chose. It was, that's where the call volume was. That's where still a lot of that. And when those guys were out there running, it made the call volume. They were going from there to Bethune or Buffalo or coming back towards Shepherd. So they were covering a lot of area. Um, it kind of gave them that centralized plot where we started with that hub and spoke scenario. Mr. Falkenberry started years ago when we started this. That gave us that hub and spoke atmosphere from Blaney side and then on this side as well, where you can have that central station and they can spread from it. And, um, we originally started with Shepherd, but being Shepherd is right up against City of Camden, it kind of wasted space per se between Shepherd and, and the city lines there. That's why we kind of moved it to Cassett. It gave us more room to cover a lot more stuff.
Yeah. No, I, I understand. So, but for the last year, year and a half, you have been working on a Shepherd though, correct?
Uh, what, what timeframe? About six months, seven months? Close to a year almost? Okay.
All right. So now we have real time. So how did that line up with your projected data, heat maps? Now you have a year of being in Shepherd. Did it, did it drastically impact call time or?
Response times, it changed some because being that Cassett was in the middle of the county line and the, the City of Camden line. Now they're moved to Shepherd. That increases their response time towards Bethune or Buffalo. So.
Okay.
I mean, it changes those numbers some, but as far as the call volume, it's still that area out number one between Shepherd and Cassett because they're running to everything.
Got you.
The, anything we get, these guys are getting them to go, that gets a truck and route and gets them going.
Sure.
If the volunteers show up and they say, hey, we got it, we're good. They turn around, they go back to the house. So I mean, it's, it's no harm, no foul type thing, but leaving it at Shepherd for long term, that's just going to create a longer response time to get to the county line or towards Bethune.
Okay. And, and I get that. And I'm not, and I don't have, um, agenda here one way or the other. I guess I'm just, I'm just asking just because sometimes as, even with our own families, you, we have our, we have our things that we want to do and things that we need, but sometimes we have to realize, okay, the money's not going to be there right now. So where's the, where's the happy medium? So that's, that's all the reason I'm asking.
And being with that station, the 1.4, like I said, it's an estimate, so that, that could be fluctuated. Uh, it's just, those are numbers that we're getting right now. Of course, prices of lumber and steel and everything is just going through the roof.
Yeah. Let me just summarize for a minute. Mr. Tucker is on the way. Mr., Mr. Gardner will not join us. And Ben, just to summarize, Vic, can you just quickly summarize Ben, where we are so that we can continue the discussion? I don't want to hold it up much.
Yeah, Ms. Kinnell, we, we just kind of updated council on what the plan was, where we are in the plan itself, uh, the status of legislation that would be used to allow us to do millage, which is not going to happen this year. And now we're discussing if council chooses to continue implementing the plan, a fee, what the necessary fee increases would be in order to continue implementing the plan.
So in other, in short, you arrived just in time to give us the solution, Ben. All right. Back to questions. This has been a very good discussion.
What's our, um, we talked about trucks and not wanting to deplete reserves. Kind of in your best guesstimation, where are we at on needing to replace a truck? I mean, and I, I mean, you talked about we need a four, we need a crew cab. So I know we're there.
Currently, we've got an engine at every station. It's 17 engines that we have. If I got a truck that goes down, we pull from the substation. We currently don't have any kind of reserve trucks.
Okay. Yeah. Because I see the, the list here. Yes, on the second.
And I've actually got two of them. One of them is, they're saying they're out of service right now. One of them is actually at the shop. We're working on trying to rebuild the pump on it. We had a failure last year in pump testing, so. We're trying to get that one repaired now. The other one has just nickled and dimmed us long enough and it's time for it to go down the road per se. But in that case, that one truck is being repaired. It is actually going to go into a station. So then it, it depletes my reserve because that's the one we actually used as a reserve.
Right. Okay. The short answer is we don't. The short answer is we don't. Cassett station, it can't be built out of reserves. We've got to, we gotta.
Not if, not if that estimate comes in and it's close to that, we're not going to have enough in reserve to cover that.
We could use a portion of the reserves though, couldn't we?
Yes.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Absolutely. And it looks like.
Can we capture that point?
We can use reserves to do what now?
Fire reserves.
To help build the new station.
And we can't use any other funds, is that correct?
Not from other funds, no, sir. Not, not for a, a, um, operational expenses, no, sir.
Would that?
No, we were talking about building the, the station. It's not an operational expense. That's a one-time.
It's a capital investment.
Correct.
So could we get a ruling that said that we could use certain of our funds voted on by this council to build a station?
I don't believe there's a problem with doing that. I mean, there's, because capital equipment such as that is something that's available to benefit everybody to some degree.
Well, legally, there legally, we can use the reserve funds for pretty much anything we want, even for reoccurring costs. It's just, it's reoccurring and your reserves is your reserves, correct? But you can still do it because we've done it before.
You can always use reserves, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Jimmy, are you talking fire reserves or the general reserves?
I'm about the, uh, general reserve.
Yeah, okay. So there's, there's an option.
We've done that before in this council. We've established four new positions out of reserves. Now, we knew, Gene Wise and I knew that money wasn't going to be there next year, but we had the ability to take out from the reserves. We had an administrator who was very conservative. He built that reserves back up. And it was actually a little bit more that next year than what we took out the year before. We just, but, but then Chairman Wise ended up, his time ran out. Of course, I think council went back to, uh, doing it the regular way, you know, through a millage. But no, my point was is that it can be done if we want to do it, Russell.
Yeah. But we, we could do, we could do some out of the fire reserve, some out of the general fund reserve. Is that correct?
We've got enough in general fund reserve to do it.
Sure. I'm just, I'm just saying to keep from taking all from one pot.
We're talking about for capital costs or a building?
To build a, yeah, to build a fire station in.
The operating, operations limit to the mill, right?
Correct. Or fee.
You could, but, but Ben, you, you still can use your reserves that would carry over. I mean, like if you wanted to hire staff, you can hire staffing for reserve money to pay for that. But then again, too, you got to think, well, what do we do next year? But my point is, is that you can do it.
You couldn't use the general fund reserves to, to run a fire department.
Do what now?
You could not use the general fund reserves to, to run the fire department.
That's correct. I'm saying that you can pull reserve money out to create positions.
From the fire reserves, yes, sir.
You can pull money out of reserves to create a, to build a fire department. And even though the positions are incurring, you can still pull the money out of reserves to pay for those positions.
Out of the fire reserves, yes, sir.
That was what I was trying to say.
Right. And in, and in my own humble opinion, I think it would be wise to use some reserve funds for a one-time cost, such as building a station, but not as a cash flow model, obviously, to, to continue service.
So what I'm hearing, and this is useful, uh, we have this, Ben, you weren't here for the three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar discussion, which is the number required to stand up the people that we need, the additional hires. And now I'm hearing, secondly, taking some innovative funding to, to build the Cassett station out. Those are the two things I've heard, Jimmy, uh, Russell.
Well, whoever you want to go first, here's where I'm at. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with anything at this point in time. I'm just throwing thoughts, listening to the thoughts and ideas. I'm sure Russell's doing the same thing.
Yeah.
Uh, to try to get my hands on where council's planning to try to go with this. Of course, I realize that the administrator had to pull all that together, but I'm just asking questions for information right now.
So what I'm hearing though, is there's four options on this page. And it's, it's an iron rule of staff planning that when given four options, they always come up with a fifth one. So that's what, this sounds like a fifth option to me. Is that, uh, Vic, uh, got to hear a little bit more from you on this. And maybe you, chief, what do you guys think?
The three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars is, there were, is the operational cost. So the station costs are not included in that for the very reason that there are different ways you can build a station.
Correct.
Than, than, than put the people on the ground. So, so that's why we don't have those costs kind of merged into it.
Yeah.
And spread out over time and annualized. So, yes, sir. I mean, so when we're sharing these costs to you of, of possible ways of fees, that's always been focused on the, the operational expenses of, of the fire plan. Fire station is still very critical sooner rather than later, just because you've got to put three to four men and women in a place to sleep if you're going to have twenty-four hours a day. And we don't have that facility yet. So we know we're going to have to do that. We may be able to make things work for a year, year and a half, but that doesn't stop us from having to do that. But that would be a different mechanism that we could use to build that station. So that's why we haven't merged it together. So yes, sir, that is, if, if you want to add that as a cost to what we're doing here, um, then you can throw a line item of use of reserves for building up a fire station. That wouldn't change the operational costs, but.
Well, here's what I'd like to see, and it's not going to happen. I'd like to see us come up with a plan on exactly how much money we're talking about. Where that money's going to come from and do an advisory referendum to the people of Kershaw County and let them tell us what they want.
And that's, that, that's a, that's a good idea. That, that's a really good idea.
Thank you.
I'm looking at, I think it was plan one, and it would raise with, with the one, two, three, four, four different fees. In plan one, it would raise another one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, um, in addition to what we already have in the budget. But there's only a need of about three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rattle. That would be what the ultimate fees would need to be to fully implement the plan. That's not necessarily what you'd have to do this year, but that's just ultimately what the fees we think would be. And if you were going to spread it out for the final implementation.
Well, to, for the sake of seeing where the, where the millage bill goes next year. I mean, we could walk that back a little bit to, uh, to fund, to fund the gentleman needed to, to work.
Yes, sir.
And then look at reserve funds to build a station.
Correct.
I think that would be a minimal impact.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to the, to the taxpayer, very minimal impact.
And then that.
That would be maybe something that we could consider.
Absolutely. That would be in, in the range. Again, I got, I kind of did mental math just sitting here.
Say it again, Russell, please.
What I'm, my thought process here is, uh, plan one shows an increase of one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars that we would, that will be gained, the county would gain in fees and added fees, four added fees. But we don't.
Total, total of the four added fees.
Right.
Total, what, what number are you looking at? Total of the four added fees?
It was three million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars that the budget would then be. The budget is now two million, ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. So.
You'd need a twenty dollar increase in the fees.
Well, hold on, let me, let me finish walking through this, please. That would raise an additional one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand. Now, that, that's implementing four fees on four different things, vehicles, parcels, uh, vacant parcels and commercial property, which is already taxed at ten and a half percent. And that's our small businesses. Um, you know, I'd like to look at an option, and this would be our first option as a council. What, what do we need to do to fund the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars? And with, with, maybe with a fee and then walk that back in the, the one point two, which will probably be one point five million for the firehouse, like you said, with increased material cost. Let's see if we can wrangle that out of existing funds because that's, that's something we can do. We can take that out of, um, your surpluses. Is that something, could we look at an option like that?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And so, um.
Can you recapture that again? I'm sorry. I was kind of doing my own figuring. Chairman, will you recapture what, Russell?
Yeah, go ahead. Summarize it, Russell.
You want me to walk through it one more time?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Plan one is, is four different fees, which is way too many.
Right. I agree with that. Yeah.
Um, we've already got one. The one fee creates five hundred and thirty-five thousand. The improved parcels, the millage on those creates one point five, six million. Our total budget is two point one. So the, the plan one and the plan two and, well, plan three's non-existent, but plan one and plan two show an increase with, with the use of fees, uh, to the tune of one point four million, one point four eight two. But we don't need a million and a half.
Right.
A year in, in positive cash flow.
Right.
Revenues. We need three hundred and fifty thousand to fund twenty-four hour fire. And I've talked to firefighters in different areas and they said, this is important. I've talked to several. So I want to fund it. I'm just frustrated in the way we have to fund it by always going to the taxpayer. So I was just thinking, hey, if we can walk it back, because we really don't need a million and a half dollars to fund it. We need three hundred and fifty or, well, three eighty for the first year.
But you're still going to taxpayer, Russell, because you got to have that increase in fee.
Well, is there a way that we can, and I, I'm, I'm certainly open to, how do we fund it without doing that? I'm, 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 but the only thing I've heard so far that's feasible is to be able to use reserve funds from the fire fund and from the general fund to build the building and to have a, you can tell me how minimal the impact would be to fund the twenty-four hour fire. And I'd, I'd like to see that number. And then I can, I can make another opinion.
Russell.
Yes, sir.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And so I think you and I were thinking the same thing because I was running some numbers too. So, yeah. If you, if you leave the fee on the improved parcels the way it is, that, that, that generates, you know, five hundred and thirty-five thousand. But, and you know, let's say you add, let's say you add a vehicle fee.
I don't want to add a vehicle fee, and here's the reason why.
Yeah.
I had a conversation with the lady the other day and she said, you know, we got an old truck and the taxes are seventeen dollars.
I got you.
And I had to write a check for a hundred and thirty bucks because of the fees that are already on there.
The roof.
So if we add an, I mean, so was she's going to pay two hundred next year or one seventy-five for her old, you know, the old pickup truck that, that used to haul off trash?
Yeah, I, I got you. And that's, you know, that's why two years ago.
Two years ago is the same discussion.
That's why two years ago, I, I mean, I, I let, I helped lead the charge to walk it back to just improve because you got people in this county that own fifteen parcels of property.
Right.
And you've got people who are farmers who have, and you've got to be clear about that. Some of these farm vehicles could be taxed and that puts a burden on our farmers, agriculture and.
Right.
Well, let me tell you who wants to.
And then thirdly, you got people who like sport, like car, hobby cars and motorcycles. And it gets, gets kind of ugly. It didn't go anywhere two years ago. So when we, and, uh, Mr. Snodgrass and Mr. Conell helped us walk that back. So there's flat fee on improved parcels.
And I voted against it totally.
But let me tell you who wants to pay more taxes. Nobody. Nobody.
Yeah.
I took a survey. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. And, you know, it's, it's our job to, to do the best we can with what we've got to work with and.
I think we all agree on that point. Um, but you framed for us an option. I'm, I'm trying to formulate it. Cause we want to build on this to present viable options to these gentlemen, and there are two that are missing. So we got the three eighty-five, and there might be a way to do that. And then we've heard about other ways to do the fire station. And does, do those two things build out our plan? Does that complete it? What's left? Follow Ron Russell. We got to go to the next stage. What's next?
What would be next would then go to the full service or the full-size crews. Um, what this does, it gives us twenty-four hour coverage, but it does not give us full crews. We, we're, we're, we're operating smaller crews than is standard than the plan calls for.
If you can go to that chart that talks to your crews.
So where is Mr. Chairman? Clarify to me in numbers what Russell just proposed we do.
Yeah, this one. This one. Go ahead.
Build the station out of reserves, capital, and create a twenty dollar fee on the existing fire fee.
I didn't say that. I was just trying to.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I mean.
I don't know. I just said.
I just heard that.
I'm trying to structure an option.
Yeah. That's why you were trying to structure Russell's option, but I'm not sure that's what Russell meant.
But I'm, I'm clear. He said three eighty-five.
Correct. But clear how you're going to pay for it.
We'll get to that in a minute. Is there also a part of that, that to, to build out the Cassett place, the Cassett station?
That would be the utilization of the reserves, as I understand.
Yeah. So those are the two options, but then how do you, then let's get to, I'm just trying to say, okay, we got an option structured. Here it is. It's option, whatever you want to call it, number five, I guess, or intermediate option because it doesn't get us to the end state. So we got that one. Now, how do you fund it? That's what Jimmy's trying to say. Hey, how the hell do you find, excuse my French, how do you fund this thing, yes, sir?
Mr. Chair, if, if I can, just, this, this kind of pauses. I want to make sure we understand the context here. So Russell, I agree with you. You know, nobody wants to pay more taxes. Uh, I think, I think.
Fees, fees are taxes.
Fees, yeah, yeah. That's, that's what I mean. But let's remember the context here. Our current, our current fire service operates off of ten, ten point two, ten point three mills.
Ten point six.
So remember the context here. So we're not talking about a, we're not talking about raising taxes or fees on a fire service that's already at a career fire service level funding mechanism. So you take into account Lugol Fire is at twenty-nine mills or twenty-six mills?
They're almost at thirty-one point six.
Thirty-one mills along with a fee. Cam, I don't know Camp City, Camden, but I'm sure it's, it's in that neighborhood. Um, the senator from, uh, uh, the senator who put a, who contested our fire bill came from a county in which his fire mill and those districts are about twenty-six, twenty-seven mills. So I, I want, I want us to remember the context here that we're, we're trying to take a volunteer service and we're trying to move it to career service. And so no one wants to pay more money. But I, I, I kind of, I guess I'm going to be the realist here and say, that's what's going to happen. Because you're, you cannot, you cannot hire crews and run a career-based fire service off of ten point six mills. Like you can't, you can't squeeze anything, anything more out of that turnip. So I just wanted to contextualize our conversation here that, you know, we are, we are woefully behind in trying to move to a career-based fire service. Is that, that, I mean, I know we all understand that, but I think, I think it helps to understand the context in which we are operating here. That, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to get somewhere and it's, it's, it's not going to be easy.
I want to get, I want to get there too. I just want to get there in a reasonable fashion. Um, let me ask a question. As people build homes in these communities, these rural communities, and, and the mill hadn't moved, doesn't it increase the amount of money that we receive because there's more homes to tax? Yes, sir. The value of the mill goes up. That, and, you know, each year as the assessor goes through and the auditor, and they make that determination of the value of the mill, which is why, um, back in the beginning when the discussion was, was held, that, that the mill was determined by council to be the best ultimate way to solve this because it increases in value every year whereas the fee doesn't. So yes, sir, the mill does go up and it's already gone up, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars from where it was, you know, two years ago. So, so it does gradually grow with time, which helps you offset those costs of, of, of growth and expenses. Have we seen the, the budget of the one million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars over the last five years? Have we seen that budget as a whole increase due to county growth and people moving into the county? Yes, sir. The mill, yes, sir, it has increased. That's my point. We have raised.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but it's not, you, we, we got to find, we got to find four hundred thousand dollars minimum. So, I mean, I get what you're saying and you are correct, but it's, it's, you're not going to get twenty-six mills worth out of ten point six mills. It's going, and, and it's going to take a long, um, a long time. And the fact that the, uh, the fire mill value is different from a regular mill. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It doesn't include Lugol or Camden or. A mill's a funny thing, you know?
It is a funny thing.
It's, 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 it's very, uh, complex. And, and I, and I, trust me, I appreciate the dialogue. Um, I'm just trying to better understand the fact that the budget has increased and we do need to fund the twenty-four hour fire. We just need to do it in the absolute most reasonable way we can.
I think for me, what that means is the least impactful way. It's going to be an impact. Like whenever Lugol Fire or Camden Fire, which we use as, you know, the class A fire service so far in the county, um, excuse me. Whenever we would look at them, uh, their funding mechanisms, they're what, uh, I just heard two hundred and fifty to three hundred percent higher, if, if you can say those mills are apples to apples. And as far as full-time fire service, Mr. Parnell and Scott, credit to your crew. I, I shared recently, but you know, there was a structure fire next to where we were having a family event over Easter in East Camden that Mr. Snodgrass is always pushing. And if it wasn't. And if it wasn't for, uh, Kershaw County full-time fire being able to show up at that time, they may not have had the water to put it out because the trucks were on a rotation running up to the church on the hill and filling up the tanker and then coming back down. And so I, I got to see firsthand, I already believed in it, but I got to see firsthand and be even more convinced, uh, seeing those guys out there putting this fire out. But I think it has to be the least impactful way. I mean, we're moving to full-time fire. We've been lagging for many years. We haven't had a, a fully funded fire service compared to the neighbors of Lugol Fire and Camden Fire. And now's the time. So there's going to be, uh, these are the decisions we make, you know? It's going to cost something to get something for value. That's what it comes down to. And how do we do that? And I kind of like Russell's idea so far of using reserves. In the past, I've suggested paying cash for stuff instead of bonding and, and doing things, and building structures in particular. Point case, I think we had a Davis Bacon Act building, uh, that we were looking at doing and it saved us just remarkable money to try and finance it another way or pay cash directly. The price per square foot went way, way down. And then we got to figure out, well, how much more fee, if it, if that's our only option and we're going to do this, will it be on, I would say improved parcels makes the most sense and made the most sense, uh, a few years ago. And those are likely, um, well, you got a lot of vehicle responses too. What's the split, guys, on?
Last, last year's calls, we were right at 2,200 calls for the whole county. Out of that 2,200, roughly 600 of them were involving vehicles. So a quarter of the calls we ran last year involved a vehicle, whether it was a wreck or a fire.
Yeah. Most of those vehicles, though, I think we could safely use the data to tie them to improved parcels somehow. Like the, the person that owns those vehicles is having an approved parcel with a house or something. So.
So we keep going back to Russell's proposal. So Russell's proposal, which I think everyone knows I certainly support using reserves, is, is Russell, is your proposal too, to create a fee for this?
No, sir. My proposal was to get an, an option that we came up with together as a group and then him represent.
Because I kind of get, everybody keeps going back to your proposal.
Yeah, when I was referencing it, I was talking about using reverse, reserves for a capital structure.
Had nothing to do with any fees.
No, well, I, I don't, I mean, I hadn't been here the whole time. Sorry about that.
I'm just trying not to get that pinned on you, Russell.
I mean, I hate to break it to us, but we're not going to find $400,000 without raising the fee. We all realize that, right?
I'm not.
Well, I mean, for recurring, I mean, we're going to find it reserves to build the station. But if you're trying to find 340,000 for a recurring 24-hour shift, I don't, and I'm just being a realist, I'm not being a tax and spend whatever. I'm just being a realist.
I want to thank you for saying that. I mean, that's, that's all it boils down to. We just need to be clear on what we're talking about.
I, I think my idea was to use reserves to build the fire station and Mr. Snodgrass is making his point about raising the fees.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's trying to pin anything on Russell. But it will cost something. And, you know, I'm, I haven't once tried to, uh, as a council member or personally, as a business owner in the Lugol community, said that Lugol Fire needs to cut their, uh, their millage or anything like that because the value is there. I see it. The, the value is there for the fire service, the equipment, the responsiveness. So it comes down to how do we pay for the value that we want? And if you don't want that much value for citizens and taxpayers, if you don't want that much value in that level of a service for the citizens, then, then we just have to take that position. But I would disagree with that. I would say we need to have a full-time level of service. I see the benefit. And the other portions of the county that have other fire service already get it. And, uh, there's not a lot of pushback or, or issue with that. They enjoy the, the fire safety protection and life safety protection that that provides. And heck, I, I, and, and some of us here already pay for it and it's not a problem, so.
Yeah, we, we do, with our business, we do pay a, a healthy tax to the fire district, Lugol Fire District, and they've, they've served us well.
Yeah, you may as well have a, a building full of fireworks over there.
We're, we're, we're in the wood products business and, and the sawdust is combustible and, and they've, they've helped us out on several occasions.
But and we're also.
I'm very thankful for, for the service.
And we're also forgetting that, so the people, so, you know, Lugol Fire District, yeah, they, they're paying more. But I, I know for a fact that homeowners in, on, on Waddlewood Lane pay a lot less on homeowner's insurance than someone, you know, that lives, you know, out Antioch or out in Cassett because of, you know, and we've talked about that before. I don't know, have we gotten updated ISO rating?
No, sir. That's going to be roughly a six-month process to get through all the.
Okay.
Lugol is a special purpose fire district that was voted on by the people of Kershaw County, not created by county council. So their fees and their millages came from the people in, in Lugol voting for that.
Right.
The people in, in this fire district are not going to get to vote for that. Y'all are going to make the decisions. I would like to see a referendum, advisory referendum go out with a, with a plan we're talking about and see what the people want as Lugol did when they created their fire service.
You know, I appreciate that in principle, but practically I, I don't think it would work very well because, well, let's just take.
An advisory referendum would not work.
Let's just take, just let me finish the thought, please. Let's just take Lugol Fire, for example. As they increase millage over the years, they haven't run a, uh, advisory referendum and delayed necessary expenditures or increase in costs if they needed it to provide the service level that they want. So I don't know how much that would delay us here. I don't know, would it be a year or two years to, when's the next election?
You could do it in months, you could do it in months.
If I could finish, please. When would the next advisory referendum be able to run and what would be the cost associated with it?
I'd have to, um, I would have to confirm first of all, if the, if state law allows us to do that in an off-cycle election. If not, then we'd have to wait till the next general election, which would be November of next year. But regardless, if we could do it off-cycle, it's a standalone election, then, um, it would obviously not be decided until November. So this budget would be a holding pattern until that decision was made in November. So it'd be the following year's budget that any, any decision that affected this would be implemented.
And I know we've talked about in the past, but roughly what's the cost?
About to run elections? 30, 40 grand, I suppose. We, I haven't run the cost on this one because this is a unique set of precincts we'd have to open because we'd never run one just for the fire district. So we wouldn't run one in Camden and Lugol or places like that.
And some precincts would be split.
Okay, Mayor, we now have.
Some precincts would be split.
Yes, sir.
On who, which, which voter or what precinct would?
Okay, Mayor, we now got Sammy here. Um, I'm going to just take a moment just to catch Sammy up. We've agreed to tax you, Sammy, for the entire cost of the fire service.
Sammy Tucker's going to take care of all of it.
All right. Sammy.
Y'all are so kind.
Sammy, most of us are focusing on this document. And, um, we, we've had, I think, what, four options? The current plan, Plan One, which I didn't hear any support for. Plan Two, uh, which includes, um, vehicles and parcels. And Plan Three is stick with the millage, um, approach, which we don't have. And then, uh, Russell and the rest of us have come up with some ideas about, we need 385K, this is about where Ben came in, to build out a 24-hour shift. And then we're looking at the use of reserves and, and/or other means to build out, build out the Cassett, uh, installation. And that still doesn't get us to a complete plan. And, uh, Mr. Jones has come in and said he'd like to see a referendum and that's what we're talking about. I think that's where I left off, okay?
Thank you.
I interrupted, Mr. Snodgrass.
Well, I was just, I was just going to say that, that I think the comparison to the Lugol situation in us is not a true apples to apples.
Well, then why do we keep talking about Lugol in here?
Well, if you finish, let me finish my thought, Mr. Jones, and I'll, I'll.
Think about it. I heard what you just said, but we keep referencing Lugol, Lugol, Lugol.
Yeah, I, I was just, I was just going to counter your point about your referendum. So that, that those voters, they had the chance to vote and to create that special purpose district. And I don't think that's apples to apples because we're not creating a fire district. We, we are managing, I was elected by the people to be a good steward of the county's resources. So I'm not, we're not creating a fire district.
You don't think all of us were elected for that?
I didn't say that. I'm just saying for me, I can't speak for the other six of you. I'm just saying for me, I, I was elected to be a good steward of the resources. So I'm not, it's not an apples to apples comparison on the referendum because we're not creating a fire service or a fire district. We are being good stewards and managing one that's already created. And I, I, you know, I don't think the people elected me to always just have a referendum. Hey, what do y'all think? I think they elected me to be in the community and to hear from them and to, to represent them to the best of my ability. So I just, I just, I just don't think it's apples to apples to say, well, Lugol did a referendum to create one, so we should do this because it's, it's not, it's a little bit different.
Well, Mr. Jones, referendum, are you willing to put that to a vote and bring us a proposal?
I have been asking for a referendum for the last two years.
Would you, uh, structure that for a council meeting?
I have talked to the administrator about that. I, what are y'all's plans? Oh, absolutely. I have no problems at all bringing a, a referendum proposal to this county council.
But you said you, the last time we talked, you said you had a way to fund it. Is that your plan?
I had a way to, I had a way to move forward without going to the taxpayers. And I plan to bring something, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just asking.
But I, I know, but you just go ahead and let me hear what y'all decide to do and then that would determine where I need to go with, you know, my procedure or my plan.
We, we really want to hear what your plan was.
I really want to hear what your plan is first.
For the last four months, you've been saying that you've had a plan.
Exactly. Well, then tell me what your plan is first, okay? Then you'll hear from mine in due time. I promise you that.
We have, well, when was, when is that? When can we hear from you?
When I'm ready to bring it before you.
Well, you said that you wanted to sell sewer and play, pay fire.
You have said it for the last four years. You have increased taxes, you've ran to, you ran to taxpayers for millage.
This doesn't need to be, I'm talking about the subject.
Yes, it does. No, you're trying to back me in a corner. I have always brought an alternative plan to this county council whenever y'all brought up fees and millage. And I plan to do it again, sir. But you're not going to sit here today in a work session and try to back me in a corner. And I know what you're trying to do. You're progressive, you're, you're trying to move forward and you're trying to now to divert the conversation to me because I asked for a referendum from the very beginning of this county council. I promised the people of Kershaw County that I would do a referendum based on what we found out from the fire service. And that's, that's what I promised. She could go pull it in the books, sir, and she can, uh, she can look up her records and show where I said that, that I'll promise I will go to a refer, I will propose a referendum to take this to the citizens before we increase any fees or any millage.
Well, let's put it on, let's put it on the agenda next month.
I will put it on the agenda when I'm ready. You will not dictate to me when I put a proposal that I'm going to do on the agenda. So you can run your mouth all you want, but you're getting nowhere with me.
I'm, I'm sorry you're feeling that way, Mr. Jones.
Well, you, Mr.
You know, we've asked for your proposal.
Well, you'll get my proposal.
And one of those was to sell the sewer.
You're going to, yes, and which not a single member of this county council even looked at it a second time except Sammy Tucker. And, uh, and, uh, Russell did, but, but bottom line is we could sell the sewer and we're getting into a whole different ballgame here when we brought the proposals here. They, they could buy the sewer plant, they could buy our sewer plant, they could pay off our debt, they could do all the millions of renovations that we have to do and they could run it. And we could take, and we, our sewer plant is probably worth more than what we owe on it. We'd have a little extra in the bank. But, but nobody was even interested remotely, in my opinion, to look at that.
Well, I'm asking, do you want to bring that forward or not?
I'll bring it forward when I'm ready.
Well, we're in the middle of a budget working, sir.
Well, you go ahead and do what you want to do.
Would you be willing to do it?
I'll be willing to do it when I see what you folks are planning to do. I don't know what y'all plan to do yet. So when I see what you plan to do, sir, I promise you, I will bring an alternative plan to this county council. So you can run your mouth as much as you want, but you're not going to back me in a corner and dictate to me when I will say what I'm going to do and not going to do.
Well, I've been watching.
And that's all, all you're trying to do is, you, listen, you're just trying to absolutely just divert the conversation to me because y'all are talking about creating a, a fee. You can't do a millage because you got shot down in the Senate, but you were going to do a millage. It could have been up to 24 mills and that's a fact. So you'll hear from me whenever I hear what this council decides to do.
Simple question is, is how do we get to a referendum, Jimmy?
Simple question is, I asked you that two years ago. I asked you that a year ago.
So would you be willing to put it to a vote and so we can move forward with a budget process here?
Yes, I'd love to see a refer, I'd love to see this go to the people of Kershaw County to say, okay, this is our plan, which obviously we don't have a plan yet. This is our plan. Now, this is what it could provide for you. This is how much more it would cost you. Or, and this is what you have. Yes or no? Either, either one. Take, take an advisory referendum and then this council can act on that. I'd love to see this council do that.
Okay. Tell me how to get there. Russell?
I would support a referendum and I think.
Advisory.
Okay. But I think if, if we were to do that, I think we got to present the whole ball of wax.
I, I agree.
And, and say, hey, this is because, you know, you just find yourself doing it again next year as they have another need come up. If, if we've got to take the step forward and take the big step, you know, the, the 1.6 million dollars or whatever, you know, to, to get where you need to go. And if we're going to go to the time and the trouble of an advisory referendum, then I think we got to present the whole ball of wax to the people of Kershaw County. And I think at that point, you'll get your answer and we'll get our answer.
So how do you do that?
First off, you, this county council decides what they want to do and come, come up with a plan and a funding. Then you go ahead and instruct the administrator to go ahead and call the appropriate folks to see what we can do with an advisory referendum. I've been asking, and you know, Mr. Chairman, that that's been my position from day one. But here we are now, two years down the road. And, uh, and Russell, I appreciate you saying that. It makes good sense.
Yeah. Well, the, the referendum, and just for the point of record, is, is it was voted on and voted down two years ago, Jimmy. And if you want to bring it back up again.
Did we, Ms., excuse me, one second, did we vote on that? I don't think we voted on it.
It was a part of the plan and so we discarded.
I don't think it was voted on, though. I think you misspoke. Now, I may be wrong, but I think you misspoke on that.
Well, I think you're, you're correct in your formulation is that we, it was put before the council and it was decided not to do a referendum. It was decided to go with the current plan that we're on with the $29 and then pursue a millage fix. Now, an option here, if you go back to the chart, is we continue to fund with 29 million, 29, uh, $29 fee, find a way to build out the Cassett, uh, environment, Cassett facility, and then pursue legislation in the next legislative cycle. And I'm being told that it's more likely on the second round to pass. So is that an option that we're looking at here today? Or are we looking at an option to, to cease work and go with a referendum? What are we doing?
I'll, I'll speak to that if, if nobody else will.
I already spoke to it, Russell. I already spoke to it, Russell. But go ahead. I'd like to hear what you're going to say.
Yeah, so I mean, if, again, just to reiterate, yeah, I mean, if, I'm not going to create enough fees. I'm not going to vote for enough fees, you know, four fees, fee this, fee that, to create 1.6 million dollars. I'm, I'm just.
Agreed.
So I think you've got three folks that just aren't going to do that.
You've got a bunch of us.
Okay, all right. All right. I'm not going to speak for anybody. I just, the folks that have voiced their four. Um, so I think if we need to raise that kind of money, I think Mr. Jones is right in the fact that it should go to a referendum. And if we're going to ask the people, the good people of Kershaw County, to help us fund this, I mean, let's see the whole ball of wax. What do you need to make it happen? And what I would like to see is to make sure that Lake Watery is secure. I was told that it works like wheels on a spoke, and the distribution will come from Cassett to Lake Watery. But the Pine Grove Station and up in Westfall and Bering to Cab, those stations that'll serve the lake, if I'm not mistaken, well, in a millage standpoint, those guys would have really been footing the bill in District One. In a fee situation, it's spread out a little more. But the values of the homes at the lake would have really been hit hard. So, you know, if you're going to ask big, let's ask the people directly, and I would support that 100%.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I think that is a little bit contrary to the least impactful approach we talked about just a little while ago of, all right, what do we absolutely need to do? Instead of asking for the whole ball of wax, what do we absolutely need to do to get to full-time fire service? I already know what the folks in the district I represent. And again, like Mr. Jones, in many ways, I feel like I represent the whole county, in part because I get calls from a lot of folks, but because I have family and friends all over the county. So we're always trying to do what's best. But the folks I literally represent in District Three, they've been asking for a full-time fire service. That's the area of the county that's growing the fastest. That is the area of the county that has the data points that leads to people telling me, when are we going to get around-the-clock fire service? So that's the area in which we've been lagging the most in responding to calls under our strictly volunteer system. And that's the area that has a demonstrated need. So I mean, under this representative form of government, I've already got the answer. I've been in the community. Mr. Snoggrass has a great point. I've been in the community, talking to people and working on this for like, I guess, four-plus years now. And, um, yeah, I don't know. If there'd be a faster and less expensive way to do it, if there's an app or something, I don't know if the government will move in that direction at any point. They could give us real-time feedback on people's thoughts on multiple options. So like the what do we need versus the whole ball of wax and what do y'all think, maybe. But I don't know what that would entail, and I don't know that of any government that's done it so far. Maybe technology will hold those gifts for us in the future at some point. I mean, more information is always useful. But that's what we've been doing with the Fire Subcommittee that we had over the last four-plus years, is gathering this information to make informed decisions. That's why we upgraded the technology in Kershaw County Fire Service. That's why we moved away from handwritten notes and faxes on reporting how calls were being responded to to an automated or electronic system so everybody can share the data. We've been working on this for a long time. None of this is a surprise. And now we've got to figure out how to fund it.
Well, I definitely think we can make the decisions on a a way to get 24 hours started. And, but that's just a smaller amount of money, you know?
I think, Russell, and tell me if I'm wrong in what you said. When you said whole ball of wax, I think you were talking about this phase, not everything at once, correct?
Well.
Are you talking about just this phase?
They're trying to raise 1.6 million. That's what I was referring to.
That's what you approached. So it was just the phase we're talking about now, not the whole ball of wax?
Well, yeah, yeah, that's very open-ended. You're right. Thank you for showing that up for me.
But what I just, I'm sorry, did not mean to interrupt you while I was talking. Um, but let me, let me say this, Russell. Thank you. But your whole ball of wax that you were, just like they were going back to your idea, they're going back to referring to your whole ball of the wax, which was leading some folks maybe to believe you're talking about the entire presentation up there with all the phases at once, but it's not. You're talking about the 1.6 million, just this phase we're talking about now, and you said whole ball of wax.
Well, what do you, what do you need to complete your plan?
That's what I thought you meant.
Well, this phase right now was just 380-some thousand.
Right.
That's what you're talking about.
Well, no, I was talking about, I mean, they're, they're, the proposed plans, an increase of, what was it, 1.4 million?
1.879668.
I'm sorry, Sammy. You said if we're doing a referendum, let's just do it for everything.
Well, if we're doing a referendum, let's not have to do another referendum next year.
I'll go along with that.
Okay.
On the refer.
Okay, let's talk about referendum again. Uh, we are in a work session. It's the middle of April. When's our first reading, Vic?
First reading will be in May, May 11.
May 11, okay, so less than a month. And we need to give guidance to this staff to build a budget. Second reading is a week after, a month, two weeks after that. And the final reading is in the first week of June. So we need to give these guys some guidance, all right? So if we do a referendum, that pushes no financial decision on you, but we don't solve our problem in the interim, okay? So the point I'm trying to make, Mr. Jones, is, in spite of your name-calling, is I'm trying to say we've got to structure this so the staff can operate on the guidance. So if we're going to do a referendum, then we need to know that. If we're not going to do a referendum and stick with the current plan, which is 29 plus, pursue it in the legislation. And then if we're going to do other things, we need to lay those out in a way that the staff can operate on. So Jimmy, my appeal to you is how to structure our efforts going forward. So I know you'd like to bring it in maybe later, but help me out here.
Julian, let me make myself clear. This council will decide the direction they want to go in. And once they decide the direction they want to go in, I'll know how I need to proceed.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
All right.
Because I don't want to know what y'all are talking about. But if you have a good idea, I would love to hear about it sooner rather than later. And that goes not just for you, Mr. Jones, but anybody. If you've got a good idea, I'm sorry, I'm slow sometimes. I like to crunch the numbers and talk to people about it. And ask the data, really, and try to verify through the data what I think is right. So if there's a good idea to throw on the table, man, please let me know now for any of you. Because if I find out later, I may not have time to really consider it. And that's just one of the problems, where I won't have time to get out in the community and talk to people about it and see what they really think.
You know, folks, let me tell you something. We just went through what everybody has said was a horrible pandemic. People have lost their jobs. People have not been able to go to work. And I know one thing, people do not want additional fees and taxes at this point in time. Now, we've had a fire service. These guys have done a great job. We created a fee, was it last year or year before last, Vic? Two years ago, we created a fee. And whenever we get to a point that we say we want to do something, it's always the timeline is this budget year, this budget year. That's the timeline we set. And, you know, West Watery, we've referred to them many, many times, Lugoff Fire Department, they do an outstanding job, a great job. They respond to structured fires. They respond to all car fires. They've been to, a lot of times, are the first ones to get there. They're glad to do it. And we do pay them some money to secure that they do that. So West Watery, in a whole councilman county, has better fire service in the east side of the river. I think we'll agree on that. I have talked to some fire, some firemen, and I think Shepherd is really going lacking above anybody else in this county at this point in time when it comes to the need of 24/7. But bottom line is, you know, you've got Camden Fire that also runs mutual aid. And I know that things, it's going to be said, well, they don't charge us to do it. But I'd rather pay them a little bit to get them to do it, just so we could have the additional fire service at a minimum cost to taxpayers. But I don't see why we don't go and work, talk to Camden Fire, talk to Lugoff Fire, and see how we can get them to come in with us on running calls and just maybe slow down just a little bit to let the folks at least have a little bit of a break without any millage increases, without any fee increases on a year such as now. You know, businesses have closed, and businesses have reopened. Some people have lost their life savings. And I just think that for government to grow during coming out of a pandemic as we've just come out of, is just not the right timing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Um, Vic, I see you have the mill value down here. What's our capacity for this budget cycle?
About 3/10 of a mil.
Just 3/10 of a mil?
Roughly, yes, sir.
I ain't going to get you much. I just want to make sure I understand on the referendum, do we stay with the fee and park our car now? And this question is actually to Mr. Jones and Mr. Brazel. I'm just trying to understand what we're doing there. Do we pay and just park the car where it's at with the fee? Don't do anything else to address, I think, the 385 that they need for the next phase? Or do we find the 385, park the car, and then work on the referendum? I'm just trying to understand the process, what we're thinking.
Can you pull your mask down so you're not muddling so much when you talk?
I can speak a little clearer for you, yes, sir.
Please, yeah, please.
Are you parking the car, the vehicle, at the $29 fee now and just working?
Whose car are we parking?
Uh, the people's car.
Okay. Just got to make yourself clear. You said parking the car.
In other words, freeze what you got with what you got, hold the $29 fee what you have now, and then start the process on working on the referendum that you guys want to see happen.
Yes, yes, that's exactly where I'm at.
Well, let me get the second question out, just in case Russell's just different.
I just want to make sure you understood my position on it.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to get.
Sure.
Or do you want to figure out how council can come up with the 385, Russell? Do the phase that they're requesting now, and then stop there and do the referendum?
I'll tell you what we could do. We could do something that that we probably, we wouldn't do this but for one year. We could use the reserves to go ahead and start 24-hour fire. Because I don't, I personally don't want to see 24-hour fire not get started. We could use our reserves to fund that for one year, and then we can have a referendum. And after that, we can have another conversation after the referendum.
Brilliant. I like that, Russell.
And let me, let me, let me share my thoughts with you, since you haven't been here during a budget cycle before. I am 100% budgeting out of reserves with reoccurring costs.
Yeah, that's why I said I'd do it for only one year.
And I'm telling you that I don't care even if it's for one year, because then you're taking the chance of the seven or six or majority of us, that we're going to do the right thing and have the same thought a year from now, when we couldn't get it right, that's why we had to pull out of reserve. So that's just Sammy Tucker's philosophy and policy. But I will not give support on reoccurring costs coming out of the reserve.
If the topic of a referendum wasn't at hand, I would be right there with you. So I'd agree with that. I mean, it's a cash flow model. The money's got to be coming in every year. But to Mr. Jones's point of a referendum, that would get us by. Now, with that being said, I think the 385,000 could be potentially very minimal. These guys deem to be able to move forward. The fire department needs to be able to move forward. That's clear. We know that. We know it's an old-dated model. So I appreciate the conversation. Thank you, sir.
Oh, same here. You know, this is what we're supposed to do at a work session, so.
Yes, sir.
We can, you know, I think Ben said it clear. Just understand where each other's coming from, so we'll know where the ground that we can make progress, the middle of the road.
Yes, sir.
And hopefully be able to give them what they need to continue services.
That's what I want to do.
I respect everybody's, you know, position.
Councilor Tucker, I want to say something about you.
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to be very frank.
Please do.
You always have a way of talking to me without trying to personalize it, personal attack, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome. I don't want to be attacked either.
And you know, I don't do that. I'm a very humble individual.
Let's talk about reserves. You had other reasons to use reserves. Did you like have a capital replacements schedule in the next, in your plan coming up in the next budget year?
Currently, capital replacements, no, we did not put in the current or the upcoming budget just for the simple fact, we weren't sure where we were going with the cassette station at this time. And we only had roughly the 1.2 sitting in fire reserves right now.
Now, so you didn't have a plan to spend it, so.
Not right now until we had an idea of where we were going with that cassette station.
But you would. Okay, thank you.
I just, you know, I would just like to say, and I know I missed a good little bit of this. This is probably with the legislation not passing. This is probably going to be the toughest thing on the budget that I think we'll be facing. No matter what we decide on, whether we go through with the referendum, whether we do fees, whether we do nothing, this is going to be one of our toughest topics that we'll have to address for '21, '22.
Yep, and I would tell you, we're queued up for next week on EMS, gentlemen. And our fee structure is not keeping up with their needs too. So I look forward to that discussion next Tuesday at 10 o'clock.
Oh, boy.
Have we given you anything to work with?
No.
Here's what I, here's the current plan. The current plan is $29 a fee. And stick with the effort to get the fire millage passed in the senate and the house. That's where we are right now. That's what we voted on, and that's what we're doing. And I'm trying to find out if there's an alternative to the base plan. The base plan is top of the page and at the bottom page, those two together. Sir, Vic?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, what I am hearing that I would posit to you, that I will pursue with staff, is, first of all, we'll research referendum to understand the process we'd have to go through, the timeframe, and when it could be implemented, number one. Number two, we will verify and confirm the amount of reserves and the uses that we can use them for, so that council can have a completely firm understanding of what's available and how that can be spent. And then, as regards any, right now, we would go forward with a status quo budget, which would not represent any kind of an increase in revenue sources until council gives us a more definitive understanding on that part.
Okay, so that's where we are. I'm just trying to tease out ideas here. Mr. Jones, you're not willing to bring yours forward? Uh, we've heard from Russell. If we got any pieces of.
Mr. Chairman, don't misrepresent me like that. That's very unfair.
I think that's what you're saying.
No, 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 no. You say I'm not willing to bring mine forth.
Okay.
I'll bring mine forth when I'm ready and I see where we're going.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Uh, sir?
Do we have a hybrid model between?
That's what I'm looking for.
Mr. Snoggrass and I?
Can you help piece together that? You were out, David, and I said, the current plan is what we voted on.
Right.
And that's the top of the page, 29, bottom of the page, millage. Hybrid plan, do we have one?
I mean, what I heard, or my sense would be, if I could answer, Russell, would be, let's use reserves to build cassette, which by the way, was the folks that responded to the fire. I got to witness, I believe. And then, for me, improved parcels seems to make the most sense because you could tie vehicles generally to improved parcels. And instead of having that number at 535 up there at the top, back that down as an additional fee on improved parcels to whatever equals your 385. As Mr. Brazel said earlier, the least impactful option that we could pursue and still move forward towards full-time fire service around the clock.
Then what we would do in that case is we would really present council two plans. One, status quo, no change to fee. Two, the increase necessary to do the next phase of the plan, which would be adding that 24-hour shift at both sides of the river. Plus, again, assuming that we're able to spend the reserves the way we think we can, cassette station as well.
Yeah, we've got two great chiefs that we've brought on board. And they, they need to know we're hearing their pain. And thank them for the work y'all do, gentlemen. Sir, Sammy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure which one of you gentlemen will want to answer this, but I'm seeing in the different phases, different amounts. So if we had, and I know what this answer is going to be, but I have to ask anyway. If we had to finish doing Phase One, Phase Two and build out, do we need the 3.5, the 3.6, or the 3.9? Because those are different numbers for me.
Yes, sir. The 3.9 is the 27 mills. That's the value of 27 mills for us. That would get us to the end of the five-year plan with the 21 shift personnel.
That's what I need to know.
Those numbers there, kind of, we just threw some fee values in there just to try to give you an idea of where that would put you. The actual parcel counts for improved parcels, vacant parcels, vehicles and commercial property, those are actual numbers we got from the assessor's office.
Right.
We based it off of it. So those numbers on the fee side there, we just put those in there to kind of show you if we stuck with a fee plan, what it would take to get up to that value of 27 mills that we're shooting for.
So Plan One and Plan Two does not reach the 27-mill value. We're still going to be short.
Yeah. Would that help? I'm just trying to say, I'm trying to structure this. Then he's got two options, Vic, and you've got two or two and a half or whatever. And then would you like to roll that into a subsequent work session? Or you want to move it to a vote at council? What helps you and Sandra nail this down for certainty, at least for the next year?
Well, we'll have at least two, you know, this being a workshop, we'll have at least two work sessions on the budget itself. And then three readings and votes on the budget as well. So we've got at least five opportunities where council will be looking at the overall budget, of which this could come up for further discussion and clarification. So I don't know if we need to schedule another one of these, but if council desires it, then absolutely, we can do so.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir? I was just going to say, my rough math is the least impactful approach would be $1.75 per month on improved parcels. And that could get you, if my math works out, to full-time fire service around the clock in the districts that currently aren't covered like Camden Fire.
Twenty-one total, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. There was a, so does that constitute two options worthy of us to consider in detail? Okay? Let me give you a third one. We've had a difficulty in the senate, and we had really more success than we thought we were going to have this time around with two freshman delegates carrying the water for us. And what's happened is, as we got to the second and approaching the third vote, Um, and what's happened is, is we got to the second and approaching the third vote, one of the senators from a county who's roughly the same as us, and I won't go into details, but they had, they, they were so frustrated with their senator, the one who stopped our del- legislation, that they are gonna go from a flat fee like we currently have, to one that was measured slightly different. And Vic, I asked you to take a look at that, in which they did it between commercial and private property by square footage. And I'm not advocating it, but I want you to know that we've looked at everything, uh, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, to try to find a solution. Vic, can you just talk a little bit about that, without avocation? I'm, I'm not pro or against.
Um, we're still working to collect the actual number of, of square feet under house versus, um, accessory buildings.
That's tough.
Right, so, so we're sure, we don't have those numbers in front of us at this point, but we're all working on it, we've been working on it for several days with the assessor's office.
Yeah, yeah, you see, what, what, this other county who's exactly the same as us-
Whose mills are 16 mils higher than ours.
But their millage is already-
For their current fire-
16 mils higher, and now they've gone to a fee, and now they're gonna change the fee, you see, Mrs. Snodgrass has done some homework. They've gone to a, they're gonna go to a fee that goes from a flat fee, Russell, $29 or whatever it is up there, to a fee that's, I, I guess, well, structured or stratified in some fashion, okay? But we all have the same problem, you're gonna get something for nothing, okay? So would you all be willing to look at that as a third option? I'm not, we don't have the details, but it might help us get there.
Do we have the mechanism to discover, I mean, Michael, do we have the mechanism to discover that?
Well, that's what he's working on.
That's what he's working on?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the, the assessor assesses by square footage.
Okay, okay, that's right.
Which really, this just sounds like a mil by another name in some way.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if it's legal, but-
But, well, it is legal, but the problem is with the fee, it, say you had a, um-
Well, I mean, the fee's inequitable.
Inequitable, yeah, double-wide trailer's taxed is the same as a 500,000 square-foot house. And that's just not fair. That's why fees are not, the word was used progressive, and, and, fees don't move up with value and cost, and secondly, they impose an inequitable, as Mr. Connel said, uh, burden on people at least able to handle the burden. So there you go.
I'd like to learn about it.
Yeah, let's, so that makes a third option.
Do we, do we know, I, I think we asked this two years ago, there's not a way to classi- you're talking about the vehicles, and I, I get, you got people with antique cars and farm equipment, that's why we went away from it two years ago, but, uh, is, do we know, are there way to classify, you know, what, different vehicles, do we know if that's, because, for example, to be able to exempt agricultural or whatever, if we would, if we would go that route?
I don't know.
I'm just curious, but Vic's gone, so he's-
I kinda like to keep it simple, I mean-
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, good, good thought, I'm not trying to put it down at all.
So we have three options, we'll figure out a way to get it into y'all, maybe we do it, uh, piggyback next week on the work session for EMS, and we'll figure that out. Is that okay with you guys?
And I will say, Chairman, if I may, and forgive the, the hyperbole here, but I just wanna, I, I, I'm committed to getting this worked out and solution as quick as possible. These guys, when they go to a fire, they don't stand around and vote on, hey, what should we do? When it's on fire, they move into action, and I think they're asking us, or I think, I believe you guys are asking us and letting us know, hey, we've got an issue, and, and I, I just wanna, wanna say, I'm, I'm committed to the work and doing the hard work with you guys, and, and finding a solution as quick as we can.
Okay.
Because the, the need is dire.
All right, so we have three options, and when you're ready, Mr. Jones, you can tell us, that makes a fourth. And then, lastly, we, we next, next meet at 5:30. The good news is, we all agree we got a problem, and, and we're working on it. Uh, Vic, uh, would you express, David, what you said to Vic?
About the vehicles?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Uh, I'm just thinking out loud, I think we've already been through this, there's not a way, we don't classify the different vehicles, do we? So if we did do a vehicle, we couldn't say agriculture was exempt, and, because we don't have that mechanism, right?
Yes, sir, I mean, it's, it's either a vehicle or it's not a vehicle.
It's either it is or it's not, okay.
Yeah, um, I think we're reaching a conclusion, I wanna thank those of you that, that left your businesses to come in for this, um, and, and many of you came a long way, Sammy, thanks for the safe journey here. Um, is the 10 o'clock meeting like this okay with you guys, Jimmy? I mean-
Usually, I just had a hearing this morning.
Yeah, so 10 o'clock's okay, and so next work session will be, and, and, and next week, okay? So with that, um, let's, let's go, thank you, gentlemen, it was a beautiful briefing,